With the staff that we have in the city. And I, if you're getting out there and having that kind of reputation, I, it's, you get to try and keep that up now, but I appreciate it.
Lot to live up to. No, we got a good crew.
Thank you, Jason. And that was a really nice article in the paper that the triplicate did on your project on the Elk Valley and lift station. And, and we're all very proud of you. We do have the best city staff in the nation. You're responsible, reliable, talented, and we can always depend on you. And you're doing a great job for us, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Weir does have some more project pictures. If you want to see those and continue on, or?
Sure.
Okay, we'll just, we'll run through a few more. And so that was the, the crew side and a lot of the projects that we've taken on internally. And kind of the, the next segment here is where the, the engineering side of the Public Works Department has in turn then worked with the crew and we've been able to do a lot of good projects. So that's kind of the next, the next segment of the, of this presentation. So one of the, some major projects that we've taken on this year was the replacement of the primary flights in the primary clarifier. This is the, a project that was before the council just a few months back. We had to order all new, all new flights and chains. And this is a 40-foot-long primary clarifier. You can see in this picture, this was a shot of the old flights. It was actually, they were redwood beams that were used. And this is what scrapes the sledge in the bottom of the clarifier. So here's a shot of the, of the new flights. You can see it was quite an extensive project. We had to put all of that chain together. This was all shipped out of the, out of the east coast and all had to be bolted down. This was all done in-house, actually mostly by the wastewater treatment plant crew, as well as Lennas Story was vital in this project. And they deserve a lot of credit. They accomplished this project in just a couple of weeks, which is really amazing. The next project that you've probably heard about, and this was, this was mentioned in the article in the paper, and I appreciate the triplicate's work on that project. I thought it was a good article. This is the Elk Valley and Harbor Lift Station project. This project has also been before the council. We put this project out to bid. We received bids that were extremely high. Actually, there's one bid on this project for $650,000. And you know, we believe we can complete this project for somewhere around $250,000. So we're, we're currently working on, here's a shot of the guys actually working on the existing wet well, which is a nine-foot concrete wet well. They're, they're lifting the old wet well off. They're placing the new manhole here. This is a shot of the valve configuration. So the, the new pumps will actually sit inside that wet well. It'll then be pumped through this valve configuration. Today, you might have seen all of the road construction that was going on on Elk Valley Road. So this is the start of actually installing those new pumps. In order to do that, we have to bypass all the sewage which goes into this lift station. That's all the sewage from the entire Virtual Ocean View area, roughly a third of the system. So that bypass is in place right down the middle of Elk Valley. It's quite a project, so that was in place today. It's a project that's cooperation between the CSA, which is the county, and the city. So the county was involved setting K row, which was concrete guardrails down the middle of the road. The city was involved. We have a professional bypass company that came in and they're setting up their pumps as we speak. And we'll, we will be glad when this week's over, as hopefully this project will be, will be completed. But Mother Nature did cooperate with us, as it was a beautiful day today, and we're thankful for that. Here's another project that we've, we ended up taking on in-house, you know, in, in addition to all these other things that we've talked about. These are projects that come up and we have to try to schedule. What makes it interesting to schedule these projects with the, with the Public Works Department is you don't know when that phone's going to ring. Now, these guys are carrying that phone. You don't know when that hydrant's going to get hit. You don't know when there's going to be, you know, a water main that, that's going to be leaking, and you stop your project. So it's, it's hard to schedule. This is the MBR project. Again, you can see all this piping. That's Lennas Story to your right. You see Jason and Kim and Joe on the project, on the picture on the left, where they're installing the piping for the MBR tanks. These weren't small tanks. These were 10,000-gallon tanks, so we used a crane to set them. You can see picking it off. You can see the, the size of the tank in relation to the, to the 10-foot-high fence there at the treatment plant. And then there, there they are in place, and we're just making the final connections on those too here. And here in the next couple of weeks, that project will be completed. Pedestrian access ramps. We're also taking on a lot of these projects in-house whenever we can. These are expensive to put out, as it's expensive for a contractor to come in and do these, so we can do these in-house. This is actually a shot of the ramp that's located right adjacent to Creston Oak School. You can see the before and the after. And we'll be working on this here in the next couple of months too, as weather allows. Again, these are shots that, projects that we've completed in the recent past. These are all of the, the sidewalks that were put in through Beachfront Park. So again, this, this is to show our crew involvement with managing the RHS crews and making sure this project went smoothly, as well as the engineering and the design that went into it. And Kevin Tuttman, the engineering technician for the city, has done an outstanding job.
I love these sidewalks. I wish we could have them all through the downtown area.
So do I. And, you know, hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to complete a downtown master plan. And if that's, that's part of it, then we'll be, then we'll be taking more steps to make that a reality. So just some shots of the new sidewalks that were put in. The other, you know, key component, not only the aesthetics of these sidewalks, but also the accessibility. You know, always before, when people tried to access the beach via Howe Drive, they would have to walk along the street. Or if you're in a wheelchair, you had no access. You were in the middle of the street, wheeling yourself, you know, to where your destination was. Now they can utilize these sidewalks. They're all ADA compliant, and they also, they function very well as a pathway. The other project which we took on, which took quite a bit of crew time as well as, as well as RHS crew time, was the removal of the trees along Front Street. This was a huge liability to the city. This was done in an efficient and effective manner, and the majority of these, these trip hazards have been eliminated now. So this is the Howe Drive Park, another project where the city turned a liability into one of the, the most beautiful areas that, you know, in my opinion, that we have along the beachfront, and also turned it into an area that, that everybody can use, because it is, you know, ADA accessible. We've had several comments in regard to this, that they, from people that happen to be in a wheelchair, that they didn't have access to a place like this. They, they couldn't get down there. And just how thankful they are to be able to go down, enjoy a nice lunch on the beach, and then have access to it. Again, a project took on in-house, done by Mr. Wiley and, and his crew are very capable guys. So there's a shot that was actually taken today. Streetlights along Howe Drive, another project, you know, we took on in-house, very extensive project. You see the old streetlight wires. See a shot of the guys, you know, they, they smiled for the camera on that one. There wasn't a whole lot of other smiles going on that day, to be honest with you. You can see that, that again, was a, a project that, that was completed in the, in the winter time. You see, there's just a shot of the new streetlights, and another project that we, as a community, can be proud of. And again, it's just another project that's, that's getting us to where we want to be. And, you know, we're taking these projects on one at a time, but we are, we're getting there. And that's very important as a community. Tsunami Landing, you know, another project that, that was completed in-house. So here's a shot of the old landing. You can see very shadowed, very, very dark. There's a shot of it under construction, and then there's a shot with it, with it being down. And here's a good aerial view of it with the new landscape and the landing that's down, and just how, how open that has made that whole area, and, you know, accessible and inviting is probably the best word to use.
So nice.
So, this is just one of those, those shots that really, it really embodies what the crew of Public Works, Crescent City Public Works-
They're looking at you like, are you crazy? You really want to take a shot right now?
Yeah. And that was one of those shots that you take, and you really don't make it obvious that you're taking it at that time. You know, you don't ask them to smile when you take a shot like this. Especially since it wasn't, you know, myself that was covered in, in concrete, like Mr. Borges was. But it, it really does. It says a lot about the guys, and just what they're willing to do, and, and the pride that they take in their work. You know, they, they are going to answer that phone call in the middle of the night when nobody else wants to get out of bed. They're the guys that you want to answer that phone call too. They're the guys that, that help, you know, myself and Jim and, you know, and Jason sleep at night, because you know that you have this team behind you that will be able to answer that call, that will be able to respond to that emergency, and to make sure that when you go to that faucet, you can turn on that water. When, when it's time to, you know, use the facilities, you can flush it, and it actually goes away. And it's just, it's so important, and we're so-
Is it, is it Joe?
This is Joe Borges, yes.
Yeah, Joe. I love him. Every time I see him in the city, no matter if he's down in a trench, or, or whatever he's doing, every time I see him, he has the biggest smile on his face.
He does.
Yeah.
He does. And he always has a positive attitude. And he, he too, and, and all of the crew now, see, I think, that we're moving the city in the right direction, and that they're a big part of it. And I think they feel that sense of ownership. They feel that pride, you know? And so when we do projects like, you know, painting the yard and, and, you know, cleaning up, and we're completing projects like the Elk Valley Lift Station, to do it in-house, they enjoy that. They take that sense of ownership. They take that pride, and I think it makes work that much better for them. And we're lucky to have them. We really are. Joe was also instrumental, I'll just brag on Joe a little bit here. He was instrumental in the Elk Valley Lift Station project. During this last week, he was the, him and Kim Smith were the, were the foreman on that project. They plumbed it up, very complicated plumbing and the valve configuration, and, you know, multiple 90s and 45s, and making it all work, and it just came out beautifully. So, so we're very fortunate. A dedicated team. And I don't have a shot of everybody, but, but I do have a shot of the, the majority of them. So these are the, majority of the guys at the treatment plant right now. We have a lot of new faces at the treatment plant. Dan Borges is, is a new face. Will Fagan recently got a new job. Marshall Jones. But really, it's one of the best crews that, that I feel that we've ever had. The attitude is very positive. They want to complete these projects. And again, they, they've really bought into the, to the team philosophy, and they, they make us a better team for them being, with them being on it.
I didn't know Marshall was working over there.
Yes, Marshall has been with the city for almost a year now.
Oh, my gosh. He must be a great asset, with his construction background.
Yes. We're leaning on Marshall quite a bit, and we're very, very pleased that he's chosen that as a, as a new profession. Here's a shot of the guys taking in front of, of the new, newly painted Corporation Yard. And I think this is a, this is a good shot too, because it, it really says, you know, what, what we're trying to do, and the fact that we, we're just one team that, that, you know, we all wear different hats, we all do different components of, of, of different jobs, but in the end, we all come together to complete the project. So this is the Public Works Park Crew meter readers. You can see the mechanics in there as well. We're, we're taking pride in our appearance now, because we represent the city. We're wearing hard-out safeties and utmost, of utmost importance to us at all times. And really, the, the whole crew, and a lot of this is brought on by Jason Wiley and Jim and Gene and everybody, they really feel that they're ambassadors to the city. So when people come and they, they ask them about the city, because, you know, they're on the street, and they're wearing bright orange. That is a signal saying, you know, come ask me a question, I know about the city. And, and so they, they really have taken a, a sense of pride in that. And in fact, recently now, we were even carrying maps for people, so when they come up, we're more prepared to answer those questions and, and, and tell them about it. But yeah, so as a, as a representative of, of the Public Works Department, it is, it's my pleasure to work for the city. It's my pleasure to work with these guys. I appreciate the council for giving us this, this opportunity and taking what was a little bit longer than what I even expected to present this, our department to you.
No, I think it's, I think it's perfect, and I think every department should do it. I really do. Including our planning, you know, our planning folks. I think I've mentioned a few times, it'd be really great to have the Chair of the Planning Commission give us a report once a quarter, just things like that. So, I mean, why not? Why not brag about how great we are?
We are pretty great. Thank you. Thank all of you, yeah.
I'd just like to say, Eric, that, that, I think I reported to the council less than a month ago, we went on our little tour, and I appreciated that tour. And during that tour, you said some of the things that were going to be happening. And when I'm looking at them, they've been completed. I'm just not used to that kind of a quick schedule. And I, and I, and I just want to acknowledge how pleasant it is to be in an environment where things are getting done.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard push right now, but with the, the, the team effort, it, it really makes it worthwhile. And it goes to show the, the type of, of crew and the type of employees that we do have working for us. So it's really an honor to work with these guys. And good November weather.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. That was great.
That was. And I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that we were able to have you brag about everybody, because you, they, they all deserve it, so. So we'll move on to item number six in the reports and presentations, a presentation by Public Works regarding the new trash cans and recycling receptacles, and they look great.
Talk about getting projects done.
Yeah.
This is a-
This one took a while, Mr. Weir.
All right.
No fault of yours.
Yes, it's, it's been a work in progress, but, but hopefully, when we come out, we'll, we, it'll be worth it. As you've seen, some of the new cans are really nice.
That's great.
So if you could load, if you could actually load the other PowerPoint, we'll start with I apologize that it's me giving this report again, and, you know, the other report-
Well, I'll say, I'm especially proud to see them out there finally, because I was on, or I still am, the, the super committee, the Solid Waste Management Authority Committee, where we negotiated the franchise. And I was on the committee that included this part of the contract. And so it's, I kind of badgered you guys for a while, because I, I felt like Recology wasn't getting the, the order taken care of. But I, once they finally got here, I was extremely happy, because they looked so good.
It has been a work in progress, and it really has been a partnership between, you know, the city and solid waste management and Recology. And they have, they, they have come through with exactly what the franchise contract has said they needed to do. These are the cans that the city chose. This is with the city design, so some thought needed to go into it, as these are the, the cans and the recycling containers that are going to be throughout town. In fact, 48 of them, and they're going to be all over our city for the next 15 years.
And didn't Eric Taylor have something to do with the design?
Mr. Taylor was involved early on with the, with that lighthouse design.
Right.
We actually purchased some cans about three years ago through a grant, and that is the design that we put on those cans. So it was Mr. Taylor, Mr. Tuttman were vital in coming up with that design.
I just wanted to give kudos to them, because the county, when they saw our, that design, they actually were very supportive of, of that being throughout the entire city and county, so.
Yes. Yes, no, it was really good, and I think it, again, it, it speaks to what we were just talking about. It speaks to, you know, and living up to that potential that we have, and just taking advantage of some of our natural assets that we have, and just, you know, the Planning Commission not that long ago adopted this lighthouse silhouette as kind of the, the new logo for a lot of the wayfinding signs. So this just, this plays right into it, and the colors play right into it. And again, we're putting these pieces together, so here in a few years, we'll actually have that picture on the box, and it'll all come together and be, be very nice. So this is a, just a brief presentation on the trash cans. Again, Recology, Solid Waste Authority, they've done a, they've done an excellent job, and now we have brand-new cans throughout the city. Going back, so we have the old containers. We had this style, the bear-proof style, that, you know, was starting to fade. We had the old brown concrete trash cans that were in a few locations. We had the exposed aggregate cans. These cans, you know, not only were they different designs and different, you know, styles throughout the different decades and when they're put in, but they also didn't function very well as a trash can for our area. You know, the, the bear-proof ones worked well, but it really wasn't bears that we were trying to stop in the downtown. It was more of the seagulls and the squirrels and different things like that. So they, the bear-proof ones, although nice and, and effective in stopping those, they were, they weren't that appealing, as far as just their opener, because you actually had to stick your hand up in them and, and get the lid, and that was always a, an interesting feeling, to say, I guess, to say the least. Let's see, a little box of chocolates analogy, I guess, could apply, but. So again, there's a, there's another, of the styles of cans that were just, it was just a hodgepodge throughout. And, you know, part of what we're trying to do here is we're trying to create a sense of context throughout the community, as well as a sense of continuity. And these cans, you might just think of them as just trash cans, but really, they go a long way, and they, they stick out. I don't know if you've seen them, but you look at those and you go, wow, that's, that's nice. So again, just another one of the old styles. So this is the new design, when we were coming up with these different prototypes, and we were going back and forth with Recology and, you know, with Solid Waste as to the design that we're going to have. And, and, you know, they had to function for Recology, as well as for the city, and be, be what we wanted. The, the cans are not cheap to purchase, these cans, and there's 48 throughout the city limits, and there's, there's 12 in the county. It was over $100,000. I think it was right around $120,000. These cans should last for a very long time, though. They, they are designed to hold up to the elements.
And I was just going to point out that Recology paid for those, not the city.
Correct. This was part of the franchise agreement. Recology paid 100% of all of the purchasing costs, as well as Recology is removing the old cans, and they're installing the new ones. So this is completely Recology's project, with city input as to the design and what the cans will actually look like. But these cans are triple-protected from the elements. They're a galvanial steel, which, which is corrosion-resistant of its own. They have a cold galvanizing spray that's been applied to the entire can, and then they're powder-coated on top of that. So they should hold up to the elements. So you can see the lighthouse silhouette logo on the trash can. The city seal is on the blue can. The county also went with the, with the lighthouse logo for the trash, and they went with the county seal on, on their cans. Here's a map of all of the locations. It's hard to see on a PowerPoint, and that's where if Sylvia can bring up the trash can map, we can zoom in on any area if the council wants to see it, as far as the map goes. These cans have been placed. They have not been bolted down yet. We're going to go and actually evaluate each of these locations independently, make sure that it's exactly what we, what you want, because with trash cans, it's not just setting a trash can down, you have to think about the accessibility. You know, can pedestrians get by the location to business, the locations in regard to site visibility for, for vehicular traffic, and go from there. Yes, yes. So this is the, the map we're working on. We're actually going to meet with bid on Wednesday and go over the locations of the downtown trash cans.
Eric, did the county choose to have some put down at South Beach? Because I know we talked about it.
You know, from the map that I sent, I don't know, Donna, did you see some actual cans that have been placed there?
We walk at South Beach every morning with our dog. They're down there.
Okay, there you go. Any other questions from the council? Other than that, these, these cans have been placed, for the most part, in their, in their approximate locations, and they will be, being permanently installed over the next two weeks.
Thank you, Eric. That was, that's good. Nice achievement. And thank you, Recology. So that's the end of the presentations. We'll move on to public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Public comments limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? Oh, seeing that, I'll close public comment. We have no public hearings, no continuing business, no new, no new business, so we'll move on to city council items, legislative matters. Mr. Plotso?
Yeah, just including your agenda packet, the final report of the resolutions that were approved at the League Annual Conference. And then we did receive an email today about a legislative update, you know, from the League. I think it's Tuesday, November 13th. If anybody's interested, I can set that up.
For legislative conference call, and, 13th and 14th.
Is it on the 14th as well?
Yeah.
If anybody's interested, I can set that up, you know, at City Hall, you know, if you want to get that update. That's all I had on legislative updates. I do have one item, just to make a comment to the council on, is that we opened up online bill pay on Thursday, November 1st. And so just kind of make a plug to our customers, that to, you know, please sign up for online bill pay to pay your water and sewer bills. To date, we've had 37 customers sign up, so we're kind of making progress, going in that direction. And we also kind of started our new website on the same date, on November 1. We've had 737 page hits on our website, so please, you know, take a look at our new website, and we'll be updating that and, and evolving that as we go through the next several months as well.
So do people just go into the water department if they want to have the automatic payment?
Do it online.
Oh, you can do it online? I didn't hear that part. Okay. Ms. Westfall, do you have anything to report out?
Just attended a couple meetings, that's all.
Councilmember Shalaw?
Attended the Donald R. Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. Also, just to report out on a committee that I sit on to the council, the Chamber of Commerce. A couple updates. We're really focusing on membership, increasing membership to help with the budget issues. Jeff Palmer is the new contract employee for the Visitors Bureau, between the Chamber and the Visitors Bureau. And then Gina Zatola, the Executive Director, has resigned. She'll be going to work for Wild Rivers Community Foundation, and so I'm sure that there will be a, a big, big shoes to fill. Gina was amazing, and I think what I'd like to say about Gina is not only did she do such a great job with the Chamber, but her passion for this community, because she, you know, grew up here and her family lives here, made her really unique for that position. So she's going to be missed. And she, you know, made a lot happen with budget cuts and a lot of adverse, you know, situations. So she's going to be missed, and then I wanted to just say that we're not having another meeting this month, right?
19th, I think.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, we have, yeah, 19th.
For some reason, I was thinking we were only doing one meeting this month. Maybe that's December.
Now, December, we have two meetings scheduled, so.
Okay, so I was just going to say that I know how hard it is to run for this office, so good luck to everybody tomorrow, and may the best men and women win.
I wanted to ask you, you know, Jeff is our new Visitors Bureau Director. I sit on that, and today it was announced he's the new Chamber Executive. So hopefully, he's going to run two jobs. It was announced by email today that he's the new Director of the Chamber. You probably didn't see it, it was, it was today. Unless I'm mistaken, did you see that? I hardly, you saw it, yeah. He's the new Executive Director. So hopefully, he can do both.
Hmm.
Yeah. You email us at your house.
Since I'm a board member, that would be nice to know.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe he's just an interim until they go out. I don't know.
I didn't see that word interim.
Okay.
Thank you.
So much for my update. Apparently, I'm behind the times already.
Councilmember Holly?
Thank you. I attended the Senior Center Board meeting, and they're certainly pleased to have their CDBG funds forthcoming, so I appreciated that, and they appreciated it. The LAFCO meeting was an interesting one. We're redoing the bylaws for LAFCO, and so we're updating to reflect current legislation and current activities that, that, that needed to be updated. It's been a number of years, apparently. It's been a number of years, apparently. Solid Waste Management Authority, of course, we all attend that. And then there's been some tri-agency activity and, and we've been, uh, trying to determine, uh, how to proceed with tri-agencies. So that's been my activity.
Mayor ProTaminia.
Besides the Solid Waste meeting, I was going to attend the, uh, Redwood Coast Transit Authority this week, but that meeting was canceled, because I don't know if you know, that our Director, uh, Mark Walkwall was in an accident. He was on his bicycle and a truck hit him, pickup truck hit him. And I saw the accident report today. He sent it. And, uh, that when they caught up with the driver at his home, he first denied hitting somebody. Then he said, oh, yeah, I was on that road. And I, I saw the guy in a rearview mirror, but I just thought he fell in the gravel. So Mark's recovering and will be available next month, we hope. And that's about it.
Thank you. And let's see, where's my notes? So we had an oversight, um, committee meeting of the redevelopment agency on the sixteenth in order to, um, adopt the second resolution for the ropes, ROPS. And, uh, then, um, Councilmember Shalaw and I attended an ad hoc committee regarding center health and the future of the health delivery system, um, on the twenty-third. I also attended the Solid Waste, um, Committee, and I'm hoping that we'll pare down that committee soon. I attended, um, a, uh, public-private pre-disaster workshop, um, meeting, um, on the twenty-fifth, which I thought was very valuable, particularly in light of what happened with the, um, building over, um, on M Street with our three businesses that got the roof caved in. And that we really need to recognize that we need to be ready before we have any kind of disasters, because being shut down costs, uh, jobs and money. So it was very valuable. And thank you to Cindy Henderson and all the people who hosted that. And then I watched the Channel Three news for, um, the Crescent City, um, K-nine unit starring Aries and Apollo. It was, it was a really good little, um, yeah. And then I attended two, um, conference calls for, um, the California League of Cities. One was the Coastal Cities, um, Conference, and they, they're submitting a matrix for, um, amendments for the local coastal plans to the California Coastal Commission. And if you'd like, you can, um, I forwarded that to Mr. Plazzo, so, um, if you wanted to take a look at it. And then I also attended, um, a Redwood Empire Division Executive, um, Committee Phone Conference. And we reviewed bylaws and, um, the possibility of, um, a fundraising committee. That is still kind of in the brainstorm, um, area right now. But we, the, the, we hadn't revised our, or amended our bylaws for the Redwood Empire Division since, um, July of two thousand eight. So this is a new amendment and, um, I, uh, there's, um, some new language in there. If anybody wants those bylaws, when we get them finalized, I'll be happy to send them to you. And then, um, they're also looking for a few, um, division policy appointments. So for those of you who are still on the council, um, we have until, um, November thirteenth for, um, let's see, what, which ones are they? Uh, three, there's three appointments that are still open, Administrative Services, Employee Relations, and Housing and Community and Economic Development. So there's three different policy committee, um, appointments that are, um, open. If you're interested, you could contact Sarah Rounds, um, our representative for the League. And then if anybody's interested in making a donation to those that have been struck by Hurricane Sandy, you can donate, um, through Co-Central Credit Union or our local American Red Cross. Um, they, what I've seen in the news, it's disasters, I mean, we thought our tsunami was bad and they're really, really bad off back there. And last but not least, if you haven't voted, remember to vote tomorrow. It's your privilege and your right and your responsibility to do so. So, thank you all. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.